Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 13th. It is 8:30 a.m. And we are starting this morning with the Audit Committee meeting. So we have a full quorum up here. Let's start with an invocation. If you'll bow your heads with me, please. Lord, thank you for this beautiful day. And the folks who are here, thank you for the county and our wonderful staff who help us do the day-to-day business of the people. Be with us today as we take care of these items on the agenda. Help us to go through each one with a clear head and heart, ready to make good decisions. Some of these decisions are difficult, but please help us make these votes in fairness and in truth. In your name we pray. Amen. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, for God.
Thank you. As I said, we have a full quorum here with all five commissioners present. We have minutes from the previous meeting. Do I have approval of those gentlemen?
I'm moved.
All right. And is there any changes to the agenda?
I believe it's ready for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Let's move directly into this fiscal year 2122 Audit Results Summary. Who do we have to present that? Good morning.
Bonnie.
I don't know if I was going first or second. Anyway.
First.
So, thank you. Thank you for time on your agenda today. I am Bonnie Cox, and I serve as the Partner for Columbia County, Georgia, for the Financial Statement Audit. I also have here with me Annie Wood, who served as the In-Charge on the Engagement for the Financial Statement Audit. I'm going to use this PowerPoint as an outline for the audit results presentation. I do not take offense at questions, so if you want to interrupt, if you would like, as we go. I will tell you that this presentation is a little bit longer than it has been in prior years, but that is not because of the county. That's because the audit standards changed. So there is a new audit standard that was implemented this year that just has increased the required communications with the body of governance, of which you guys are as the Audit Committee. All right? Most importantly, let's talk about the results of the audit. Well, before I do that, two slides back, there's a team slide. I want to point out one thing on this team slide. There are two new members of the Engagement Team this year. Lauren Strope served as the Engagement Partner and Jennifer Moran as the Engagement Manager. One of the things that's required in our audit standards is that we maintain professional skepticism, and we basically change things up every year. So just wanted to kind of point out that these two members of the Engagement Team are new to the audit for this year for the county. And that was intentional. I'll also say that these two individuals work on nothing but governments all year long for the firm. So, anyway, all right, let's go. So this here is a paragraph that does describe our audit opinion. We do anticipate being able to issue an unmodified opinion. We anticipate issuing that by Friday, just in the very, very final stages of the QC there. But clean opinion, unmodified opinion on the financial statements there. I'm not going to read this slide to you. This is a lot of information that talks about internal control communication that is required here. This is basically findings, and it kind of describes for you in the audit standards the difference between a material weakness and a significant deficiency or a deficiency in internal controls. If you saw here any corrected or uncorrected misstatements, that would indicate that we had audit adjustments which may indicate audit findings. So what you don't see here are any material weaknesses to be reported, significant deficiencies to be reported, or audit adjustments to be reported. And so what that means is we didn't have to come in and make any changes after our audit testing there. We do have one control recommendation. This is something that we, you know, we see a lot of county governments all the time and just kind of like to recommend best practices. This is specific to financial reporting that is considered disaggregated. You have financial reporting that is housed within the county's finance department, and then you have other financial reporting controls and processes that occur throughout the county, including the constitutional offices and what are deemed to be component units, separate legal entities that are included in the county's financial statements. We saw a variety of reporting practices there and internal controls there. There were small immaterial things that we noted, that we had to make manual compilations of those things. We also noted some best practices of things of reviewing old outstanding items on bank reconciliations. Nothing that triggered a finding, but certainly something that does trigger a recommendation to you guys to kind of take a step back and look holistically at each of those disaggregated financial reporting processes and do what I would recommend, consider it an internal control risk assessment, which is just an end-to-end looking at from start to finish, get a deep dive, see where there could be some best practices implemented, because each one of those honestly are being done a little bit differently. So that's a recommendation there that we just recommend for best practices at those disaggregated locations. Certainly, if I were in your shoes, I would look at materiality to prioritize those various Another slide that I'm not going to read all the words to you, there is a lot of audit lingo in here. What's important in this slide is to talk about the new accounting standard that was implemented during the year, GASB 87, which governs leases, which in GASB world leases mean any contract that is greater than 12 months that involves any sort of asset use. And so I can tell you, this was a very rigorous exercise that your management went through in order to, number one, just identify where all those contracts were throughout the county and get them all in one place, all of the accounting pronounces there, to be able to apply the calculations that were necessary in order to implement this standard. I will say, we audited it. We tested it there, and we didn't have any issues or problems with either the completeness or the way that your manager did. But this one was not inconsequential in regards to the lift that it was required to implement, but you guys were there and we didn't have any issues with it there. None of the other accounting policies were different from prior years. All right. Another slide that required communications in regards to aspects of accounting practices. So related party transactions, these are just where there are common control, common members, common affiliates. There is accounting standards that just govern the way that we identify those and disclose those there. And if we had had any issues with any of those issues there, then we would report those. But we didn't have any issues at all either identifying or ensuring that those disclosures were adequate there. Significant and unusual transactions. The audit standards are very specific. Certainly, you have significant transactions during the course of the year. You're a big county and you have a lot of things going on, but we did not have any significant and unusual transactions to bring to your attention as a result of our audit. Significant estimates, again, audit standards require that we bring to your attention where we've identified those significant estimates in the financial statements. You can see a list of them here in the slide. The reason it's required that we bring these to your attention, we have to audit these differently. There's a lot of assumptions that your management makes in regards to how these amounts are recorded in the financial statements, and the audit standards guides us on how to test those assumptions and how to see if they are consistent with how they were applied in prior years. And we didn't have any issues with testing the estimates in the financial statement. In our opinion, the financial statements are clear and neutral. If we did not believe that there was clarity there in the statements, we would bring that to your attention as well. One of the pillars of the auditing standards are maintaining our independence. And so if we had issues that we believed impaired our independence, we would bring that to your attention. You can see here a list of the non-attest services that we've provided, but as such, we are not making any management decisions, and so we've been able to safeguard that independence there. All right. If we had had any difficulties during the audit or disagreements with your management, if we had had to consult with other auditors, we would bring that to your attention. And there's a lot of words on this slide that tell you that we did not have any of those circumstances. Before we release that final report on Friday, we will also have your management sign for us a representation letter. Of course, if you would like to see a copy of that, happy to provide that to you. But it just goes in a lot of detail that your management was transparent and truthful and didn't withhold information that would have been relevant to our audit or to those financial statement disclosures. Oh, back one more, please. Thank you. Here, if we were aware that your management were consulting with other independent auditors, we would bring that to your attention. And then if there were any other findings, if any fraud or illegal acts had come to our attention, I would bring that to your attention. And if there were any items that indicated going concern issues, meaning is the county going to be here a year from now due to the financial position, then I would bring that to your attention, but we didn't have any of those issues either. These are a lot of words here that are just regurgitating what is in our audit report. What you find, and I know you guys read it front to back, what you find in the front before the basic financial statements, you find our audit opinion on the financial statements. There's several statements there. We opine at that level, then there are footnotes, then there's a lot of detailed schedules in the back. So those detailed schedules are considered supplementary information, and what the language here in this green box is just telling you that we review that in connection with our audit of the financial statements as a whole. We're not opining at that detailed level. We opine at the government-wide level and the fund level. We also know that you, your management prepares an annual comprehensive financial report, and our audit is included as a part of that. There's other information from management included in that report also. That's what that orange box is telling you. As if the accounting standards were not always just super exciting, we have several new ones coming up down the hatch. There is going to also require time from your management to implement these, but what I can tell you is that there's already been discussions there about how your management has a plan to be compliant with these as they come up. Several are going into effect next year that we do believe are going to impact the statements as well. With that, I will stop talking and ask if anyone has any questions.
I don't have any questions, but I want to say, no offense to Bethany, but that was so boring. Boring, because we did a good job.
Yes.
Leanne Reese, you ought to be applauded. I am an accountant, and I know how hard it is to go through an audit, and for her to go through, no issues, no findings, no difficulties, no disagreements, no matters, no events, no illegal acts, no fraud. She said none noted, nothing came to our attention over and over and over. That says a lot about you and your staff and the whole staff of the county. You know, Scott, everybody, thank you so much for keeping it clean and doing it the right way. I feel like everything is above board, and if there was anything you could have found, you would have found it and put it in there to have something to justify your existence. This is fantastic. I cannot say enough about this. Leanne, thank you. Do you have any comments?
I just want to thank my staff as well, because
Thank you.
They worked behind the scenes to get all this done.
This is a lot. This is a lot. Gentlemen, sorry.
I just want to thank the chair for explaining it in layman's terms.
That it was boring.
I understood every word.
It was good. Thank you, Bethany. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Next year, just say they did good.
Yeah. You're good. Thumbs up. All right. If we have no questions for that section, what do we have next? Draft reports, clerk of court. Is that you, Scott?
It'll be the internal audit. Ask Mr. Snyder.
Oh, that's right. Okay, okay. There we are.
Good morning.
Are you going to be boring as well? That'd be great.
This will be very, very exciting.
Okay.
Riveting. Okay.
All right. We do have two internal audit reports to present to you today. We're going to start with the clerk of court, and I'll run through our results here. And there's actually a little bit of a tie-in to the discussion that Bonnie just brought up about the disaggregate accounting in the constitutional offices. So we'll touch on that in just a minute. We did start off with some pretty basic procedures. We actually counted all of the cash bags. There are six cash bags at the clerk of court's office and a change fund. We recounted all the cash, and it was all where it was supposed to be. We also traced various deposits from a selection of months back to the deposit ticket, to the bank statement and the general ledger, and all of the cash collections were received correctly. We looked at cash remittances, and here I'll just briefly note that the clerk of court's office is what we call a custodial fund. So money that comes into the clerk of court is not revenue to the clerk of court's office, but it all is remitted to another entity, various other entities. And so we tested the remittance of all those funds to all of those various entities by obtaining reports from the ICON system, which is a holistic software package that is case management and general ledger. We noted that all of the remittances were properly processed timely, and all the cash went to the appropriate entity. And that led to the next test, which is what we call excess cash calculations. So if we go back to 2018 and look at our report from that point in time, there was a little bit of, well, actually a significant amount of cash in excess after those remittances. And understanding that the clerk of court's office is a custodial fund, all of the receipts should either be remitted or on their way to being remitted to other entities. And so when the time came to come back around this time, we were really careful to make sure that all of that was correctly identified. And if you look at page seven, you can see that the only net, we came out with an excess cash of $242. What that means is that there's been a significant improvement in internal reporting over the last few years in tracking of these funds. So this, we were very, very pleased to see that we did not have that large amount of just sort of unreconciled cash at the date that we selected for testing. So that was great news. Now, if you look at page eight, you will find our only issue, or finding, I should say, which is relating to bank reconciliations. So there are two things. There are aged outstanding checks, which are sometimes referred to as, well, stale, yes. There are some specific policies and procedures for dealing with this, and you can see in the management response on page nine that the clerk of court's office is working on the proper resolution of this. It's called unclaimed property. And there is a process for it, and there's an explanation for the existence of these checks. You can see there are four accounts. One account had 10 checks in it, one five checks, one three checks, one had one check. We just disclosed that to you here in total, and I do point you to management's response on page nine. Now, the second larger table here is deposits in transit. So these are items that are listed on the bank reconciliation as differences between the bank account and the general ledger, and they go back to, well, essentially, the adoption of the ICON software in November of 2017. You can see several dates here at 10/31/17. That's the, right at the adoption of the implementation of ICON. So these represent errors. These are incorrect information in the general ledger software. And so our recommendation is essentially to clean this up, and I'll point you to the management response on page nine. After our conversations, there's a discussion of hiring a third-party accountant to come in, and I do support that. I think that we, that it's necessary to have the skills, knowledge, and experience in accounting to resolve these kind of issues. And then there's the technology part, working with ICON, to find out why there are issues within the system, because this just makes internal reporting less accurate. Any questions about that before?
Just for clarity, on the larger table there, say, for example, the first one, 10/10/2019, there is on our books a deposit for $26,948 that never hit the bank? Is that what it appears?
That's, if this were, if the information were accurate, yes, that is what it means. This is a deposit in transit. It's showing that cash was deposited on 10/10/2019 and has not cleared the bank yet. But I don't believe that is accurate at all. I don't believe that there's $29,000 that's hanging out there in between the point that it's deposited and the point that it shows up in the bank statement. But it is in the general ledger that way. It is in the bank reconciliations that way.
If I could jump in real quick. So this is a matter that kind of keeps recurring. I don't think the clerk has done anything wrong. We're not alleging any wrongdoing or anything like that, but there is a lot that needs to be considered here. And as a result of our external audit, meeting with our external auditors, and now we're seeing this with our internal audit, we are seeing that there may be an opportunity for us to hire a consultant, take a little deeper dive into this, try to figure out exactly what's going on. So Ms. Reese and I have already made that decision. We're already moving forward with that. Unless the board has some objection to that, we're already moving forward with the recommendations. It's not a finding of the audit, but it's a recommendation of our auditors, and our executive leadership team has already decided to move forward with that.
Thank you.
Yes. So I think, I think that's the right approach. I don't, I also do not allege any wrongdoing, but there is incorrect information in the system. Again, management responses are on page nine.
So is that different departments are doing things different ways? Is that what we're saying, and we're going to get a uniform?
Well
Try and put a uniform the best we can, because I know they all operate. So.
Not really. I think, I think more of what we're saying is, is we're going to, we're going to try to figure out a way to reconcile what this has. As a constitutional officer, the clerk has the ability to use whatever software she wants to use. She does have a fiduciary responsibility to the county. She is a member of the audit or a part of the audit, so she does get audited, and we've done all that here. The rest of our constitutional officers are the same way. So I don't know that we will ever get everybody on the same page. Most everybody is on the same page, but again, the constitutional officers have their own reasons for doing what they do, and they're independent of the Board of Commissioners. But I do think having the consultant come in and take a look at this will clear up these few things. I don't know that it'll necessarily get us exactly on the same page, if that's your question, but I think it will answer any questions that need to be answered.
Ms. Reese, do you reconcile the bank statements for the clerk of court's office, or they do it internally?
They do it internally.
We have a county standard that says if a check's been outstanding or deposit's been outstanding for more than so many days, we need to look into it? I mean, if...
Well, we do on our side.
We do 90 days. We try to get everything reconciled within 90 days.
And I think, I think what you may find is, as a result of this third-party that comes in, there may be some recommendations that come with that, and we'll sit down with the clerk and go over those recommendations. And again, if the board wants to be a part of that and wants to sit down with the clerk as well, maybe the chairman or the chairman of this committee wants to do that, we can certainly, you know, do those things.
Certainly deserves some attention. Thank you. Did you have any other questions? Any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you. I apologize for the interruption. Please continue.
That's fine. That's fine. So the next few sections of the report are very standard procedures, purchase requisitions, purchase card transactions, and employee timesheets. There are no findings in those areas. We always take a deep dive into those procedural things, and again, no findings in the clerk of court's office. But we had, we had good conversations with the staff at the clerk of court's office, and we have a section here we're calling general inquiries and observations. We did spend some time over the last several months discussing these issues with the clerk of court's office, and their takeaway is that there's a desire there for additional training with this ICON software. And to your point about different departments doing things different ways, and this, of course, being a constitutional officer, the use of this ICON software is because rather than using Munis, it is designed to be a case management system that's more integrated with the general ledger system. So it may be an appropriate system for them to use, but a little additional training in that area may, may help them to fully utilize it and could prevent some things like these outstanding transactions. But that's all I have for the clerk of court, unless we have any additional questions.
No questions. Please continue to, what were your streetlight funds next?
Streetlight fund.
Okay.
This is going to be fun. So the streetlight fund is not so much of a department. We didn't look at timesheets or anything in here. This is really an analysis. Now, there are two, two forms of revenue and two forms of expense. On the revenue side, whenever a developer is building a neighborhood and requests streetlights, then there's a charge to the developer for the installation. Now, homeowners are never charged for the installation, not directly, of the streetlights, but once the streetlights are installed, homeowners are charged $60 per month per lot to offset
Per year.
Per year. I'm sorry. That's right. That would be a lot for, per month. $60 per year per lot. And that revenue offsets the installation and the utility cost. So the two costs they have are installation and utilities. The two revenue streams are installation fees charged only to developers and then that annual charge, which is added to the property tax bill. So in looking at the revenue cycle and the expense cycle, we noted no issues on the expense side whatsoever.
As long as I've been here, I haven't heard anything.
It doesn't seem to happen.
I agree. I agree. Our policy doesn't even mention commercial in it. Before I pause, I just wanted to read it again. It doesn't even mention commercial, but there might be a commercial fee that was set at some point, but...
Yeah. The, in our, in our work papers, we noted that there was no commercial activity whatsoever. This is going to be all residential. The, I don't know if there are any commercial streetlights that exist. None have been installed. None exist. All right.
That we collect for.
The, so that's, that information, that description has been around for a few years of the commercial and residential. Effectively, it's 100% residential, and I should, I should update that paragraph to just take that out, unless it's a possibility that there could be, the county could provide commercial lighting.
And I've read our policy. Our policy only mentions residential, so I don't know where the commercial part came from.
Okay. And we may see some
Been had a number of them. I don't.
We may see some recommendations. Y'all all are aware that we are in the, in the process of doing a streetlight study right now, so there may be some recommendations out of that study that would lend itself to this.
So the, so this is all going to be residential. In fact, we looked at 14 installations. That would be during the period we were looking at new streetlight districts. Of the 14, we looked at six were initiated by homeowners through petition, and eight were initiated by the developers. And in two of those six homeowner instances, we noted that the signatures on the petition were somewhat less than the 75% number of lots in the district that was, is in the current policy. So the number of signatures relative to lots was 61% in one case, 72% in the other, rather than 75. There's also a policy within the county of verifying some of these signatures, basically by calling people on the, on the list and asking if they signed the petition. And the, the policy has been 33% of the 75%, and we noted some instances where we were a little less than 33%. Approximately 29% were called, for instance.
Go ahead and address those. So we have, the administrative staff in the Engineering Services Division does this usually is one person. Let me just make a couple of clarifications. So first and foremost, this is an internal policy. It's not the ordinance. So the fact that we didn't have the 75% of the signatures matters as it comes to the Board of Commissioners, but the Board of Commissioners could do it with no signatures if you so decided to implement a streetlight district. So we don't have any issues there, but we do have an issue with not verifying the signatures and making sure that all the information we have is correct. And I'm not sure that there was a procedure in place then. I think it was just a matter of, you know, getting a big stack of paperwork and somebody taking a look at it and making sure that it looked okay. I can assure you that that's not the case now. That's the reason we have these audits. We, we actually asked our internal auditor a couple of years ago, Rick, I believe it was, to expand the, the audit from the, just the financial audit to actually operations and look for things like this, so we could, we could figure out what, what needed to be done. This is a great example of, of a situation where we need to catch something and we need to change our policy. I will tell the board that this rests solely on my shoulders, not the staff's. We need to make sure we have policies in place that they do, and we do now, and going forward, we will not have this problem again. But, you know, not, not having these signatures verified and not having the correct number of signatures is not the way we like to do business.
Mr. Snyder, on the items you tested, 14 installations, whatever, how old are these? Are all, are these are all active this year, or maybe they completed this year from 1982?
There should be a fair amount of detail about the dates of the different selections. about the dates of the different selections within the body of the report, but I could get back to you more specifically. But essentially, uh, there's a little bit of a delay from the field work to the prep, the presentation. This is, this is-
But they're fairly current. This isn't from the 80s or 90s. This is-
Oh, correct.
That was in the last couple of years.
Okay, okay, okay. That's what I wanted to, okay.
Um, and that, now, but I, I think we go back 15 years in a little bit, but we haven't gotten to that page.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay. So, um, as Scott said, the, these levels, the 75%, the 33%, that's set by policy. And I'm not sure exactly what the correct policy is. I don't know if 61 is enough or should be 75. Uh, but by comparing the, the, um, what's going on in the county to the county state and policy, we noted these, these variances. So, um, let's get into some numbers. Um, on page five, you'll see a graph that looks like a W and a table with some numbers in it. This is installation revenue versus cost. As I mentioned, the, the fees only charged to developers, there's no installation fee charged to homeowners. So there's always a loss on installation. Um, you can see as you go from 18 to 2000, 2018, 2022, now there would be two components to the actual cost. What I mean by that is the cost per streetlight and the number of streetlights. But there's a significant increase in 2022 in the, in the cost of installation. And I, uh, while there may be more streetlights, I wonder if inflation may have impacted that, causing this, this rise, um, in the, uh, cost of streetlights installation. On page six, for the same five-year period, we looked at the revenue that is collected annually, uh, $60 per lot in comparison to the utility costs. Now here you can see a significant margin where the, the revenue that's being collected through the property tax bill is certainly covering the utility costs so up to this point in time. There's a little bit of a tick up in this bottom line that represents utility cost. You can see utility cost in 2022 was about, about $2 million. Um, so as we move on-
But there's a net of about $1,004 rolling? Is that, where does, what happens with that?
Well, the, uh, there's another chart that will address that, uh, as well. We will. We're going to look at the total revenue and total cost for the entire program in just a moment. On the next page, we took an additional 17. So the 14 were new installations. Took a 17 randomly selected, um, streetlight districts, some old, some new. And rather than looking at the actual numbers, um, we kind of ran the numbers on them. Um, we were not surprised to see that there's a loss on installation for these, these different streetlight districts. But what surprised me was that, um, as I multiplied the number of lots times $60 and then looked at the projected, uh, utility cost, it, the utility cost on my projection didn't cover, uh, or the, the tax assessment of $60 didn't cover the utility cost in this projection that I ran. So I went back and looked at the most recent five years and found that the average cost per lot is $51. So if we're charging $60, you have a $9 margin. Now, the, um, so I looked a little closer at it. So if you look at page eight, I looked back over the, the 15 years and I noticed that in general, the, um, the $60 per month has covered the cost of both installation and utilities combined. So there's enough margin on the, uh, when you compare the, the annual charge to the utility cost, there's enough margin to also cover the installation. So overall, the streetlight fund has covered its cost. Um, but, and of course, it's not designed to make money. It just needs to cover its cost, which it has done. Again, there's a little bit of a tick up here at the end of this chart. So I ran some projections. And if you look at page nine, I have the actual for the past five years and then the projected through 27. Now, if I could accurately, uh, predict inflation, um, well, you know, I'd be in a better place. But I had to try and peg inflation just something. And it can't possibly continue at the, our current inflationary conditions, cannot possibly continue through 2027 when we'd be in a world of hurt if that continues. I did some, some research. I found some projections that project, project about 3% inflation in the out years in Georgia. So kind of a return to the mean, you would say. So I used a 3% increase in the cost of installing lights and 3% interest in uti- increase in utility costs, which I can't, it's even harder to predict inflation in, in, uh, the energy sector. But if the, if there is an increase of approximately 3% in the costs that the streetlight fund faces, then we'll, we'll go into the red in 2025. So all of that to say, the streetlight fund has historically covered its cost, uh, continues to cover its cost. If we do see inflation, then in the next couple of years, that slight tick up that we see in these charts could cross over and we could be in the red.
What about the, when I say the rolling number? Start adding the net gain.
We have a fund balance.
Of 1.4-ish?
A little more than that.
Between 2 and 2.5 million.
Oh, okay.
We, we have a-
That answers that question, yeah.
We have a fund balance to be able to do it. I, I think the, the big issue here is, again, waiting for that study to come back is going to be part of this. How we integrate commercial lights is going to be a part of this, looking at the fee to make sure it's covering it. And I think probably the big issue is, is the light installation piece. We see that the developers are, are installing the lights and the county's picking up, you know, a good bit of that tab. So we'll have to balance all of those things. Uh, you know, we have been watching this very close since 2011. Um, and, and we've been okay, but, uh, you know, we'll, we'll continue to monitor it and we do have a fund balance.
Chairman, which committee next year do you think will be taking this up?
Once I sit down and really think it through and analyze the committees, I'll, I'll advise you.
Didn't I find homework? I don't know. All right.
Keep in mind too, that, that Georgia Power is governed by the PSC, so they can't just arbitrarily raise rates.
Right.
So that 3% every year for five years is highly unlikely.
Yeah, that is, that is fair. I, um, I tried to, um, peg that utility rate to something, uh, more concrete and I, I just couldn't find any. So I just, so if, if we have an increase in utility cost, uh, for myriad of reasons, uh, I suppose my finding is not so much that, that utilities will increase 3% per year. But if there's, if there is inflationary pressure on the cost side of streetlight, then the margin's not very deep, but the fund balance is. So you could, you could sustain, I'm sorry, you could sustain some losses beyond, say, 25. If it flipped into the red, you could still sustain that for a bit. Um, but if you're analyzing streetlight fund already, um, I think that the, the history of the fund is, is excellent. In order to continue to be excellent, just want to make sure to, through these inputs. Right.
Right. Maybe. Hopefully not.
I'm gonna-
It just depends on who needs to pay for it. Better get it. Came from where it came from. We know that. But in the future, as we're adding, at some point in time, yours are going to be raised by somebody down the street because we're paying the installation for the developers. Fall on the backs of the people that are using it. Need to fall on the backs of everybody else. I, I've been a advocate of this. The last time we did the streetlight thing, I was the push, um, consultant evaluating how we do this. I think there's going to be a need for door lighting. Where's that going to come from? Does that need to come like from the streetlight district? Everybody that drives up and down the road uses it? So how do you just pay? Or, or, I, I, I mean, you know, it's, it's a lot to this fund, not that it's just got a little money now or whatever, but it's what we want in our age. Because as you may not know it, but as you age, you're driving around at night.
Yes, yes.
I can't believe you just called Don out like that.
I just called you out.
I don't.
I think he just volunteered to chair that committee.
I, I don't want to let Mr. Richardson stand alone on this, but he and I both represent people who, like myself, I finance my own streetlight district. And, and I don't think in, in spirit that Georgia should play, pay for a road in California. So this cost is going to have to come down where it rests, where people use it. And, and I look forward to a policy that's going to reflect that. Where the costs need to be. I see this W is, it's a little chaotic and a fund is, is terrific, but I want to look at the actual cost and if people are using the service wanted, then, then they can pay for it a- as they use it. I thank you for ringing the bell on that, Ms. Richardson.
And so for our audit portion of this, is, um, the, is that, is that it for streetlights? Or did you have?
Yes, that's all I have for streetlights. Um, uh, I can update you on things we have going on, uh, so you know what we're up to. Um, and then, uh, I can let you go. So we, um, we are currently working on the sheriff's office. Um, we've already made contacts there. We're, we're, uh, getting documentation and, and doing tests there. Uh, departments that are due on the three-year rotation would include the libraries, uh, parks and recreation, and re- the recycling department.